We're getting ready to start, you guys. I'm going to call this meeting to order tonight. I'm Ellie Taylor, the Planning and Zoning Coordinator. And so that we can go ahead and elect a Chair and a Vice Chair. Do I have a motion to elect a Chair tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Francis Kung Yu as Chair of the Planning Commission of Alpharetta.
I'll second that. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. You accept, Francis? Thank you. And now we need a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Martine Zerinkis for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission of Alpharetta.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Thank you, and I will turn the meeting over to Chair Francis Kung Yu. Thank you.
I call this meeting to order this first meeting of the year 2024. Thank you, members of the Board, Planning Commission, for electing me as Chair. I've been here now for fifteen years, and it's been an exciting journey, and it's always wonderful to have the confidence of members of the Planning Commission and Coagulation's mandam Vice Chair. And Happy New Year, everybody. We have two items to consider tonight, and the minutes from the November second meeting, which I did not attend, the Vice Chair chaired the meeting, and so I'm going to abstain from voting for that. And then the other two items, CU-24-01, the Terranova Skin Clinic and the Unified Development Code text amendments. If we pass these on to council, the two items, they'll be considered on January the twenty-ninth, 2024, and as you all know, council makes the final decision. So before we consider the two items, and we have a presentation, sorry, from the City Clerk, Ms. Lauren Shapiro, on open records. Sorry, I missed that one, all right? The beginning of the year. So we'll approve the minutes, and then we can go to that item. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November second, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly secured, or in favor, please reach your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I was absent from the meeting.
Yeah, I see. We have, we have three voting and three not voting. Our vote just as recorded. The motion carries. Lauren?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you all for letting me join your party this evening. I'm here just to discuss and do a little open records refresher with you all. So earlier today, you all should have received your city email address if you haven't already. So just thought it would be a good opportunity to give you all a nice open records refresher and give you some insight about how we handle open records in the city of Alpharetta and how it could relay to using your new city email account. So if you're not already aware, hopefully this is somewhat of a refresher for you all, so feel free to stop and ask any questions that you might have as I'm discussing this. The Open Records Act is codified in the Georgia state law through these sections that you should see on your screen now. Basically, quite some time ago, the Georgia state legislator made it one of their main priorities to make sure that any business that's conducted by the government is open to the public and open for public inspection at any point. So just like it applies to an open meeting like we're in right now, that public can come and watch and join in. Same thing applies for any records that the government produces as well. Those would be provided to the public if they are requested. So the main portion of that, they said that they should be able to be inspected by the public without any delay, but there is some exceptions to that rule as well. So for the Georgia law, they describe a public record as pretty much anything that we do in the practice of government. So it could be, you know, an actual piece of paper. It could be an agenda packet. It could be a zoning map. It could be an application. If we have a land disturbance inspector that goes out to a job site and takes photos on his iPhone as it relates to a permit, those photos could be considered an open record. Something interestingly, as we are moving towards a more digital world, and something that the state legislature hasn't really expanded on fully, are the idea of text messages and emails and any kind of electronic communication that could be considered an open record that would be subject to production as well. So that was part of our idea of issuing all our boards and commissioners a city email account so that in the event there is an open records request, say on an application for a development project, and they requested all communication by the Planning Commission to city staff, instead of us coming and asking you, "Hi Chairman Kung Yu, can you give me all of your emails from your personal email account that deals with this zoning case as it relates to some application?" Instead of us asking for you to provide that from your personal email, we would then be able to use the city's software that we have for retrieving emails and conducting searches and pull that from your city email account. So it's just another layer to protect your personal privacy, and obviously, we'll encourage you to do your city business on your city email account so that there's not an overlap between your personal email and your city email, which I'll go over in just a little bit. Just some background on open records requests in the city of Alpharetta. Last year, we received over six thousand two hundred open records requests by members of the public. Requesters, they ask for the strangest things sometimes. They can ask for, you know, emails, notes, meeting invitations, text messages, applications, plans, minutes. Another big one that we see, a majority of our requests, are things like car accident reports, which would be held in our public safety office, fire inspections, and then court records. So something that's interesting in the legal profession, a lot of attorneys are asking for all types of open records requests in preparation of lawsuits as well, instead of the traditional discovery process. They almost use it as the pre-litigation to their cases. So that's why, you know, we're really trying to make sure that we're able to capture as much data as it relates to work being done by our boards and commissions, rather than just sitting in your personal email box. So just a little background on how we process open records in the city of Alpharetta, if you've never heard or learned of any of this. So open records requests, individuals can submit them in any kind of medium. We have to provide them the answers that they're looking for, the documents that they're looking for. Most common, we ask our requesters to submit them online, so they're able to be tracked, make sure that the documentation is quickly released to them, and then so that we have a paper trail for every records request. But if someone were to stop by our office or call in or email, we would have to respond that way as well. So we use a technology software program that's linked into the city's website called JustFoya. So if you haven't submitted an open records request or you ever do need documentation, that's our preferred way to do so. So once a request is submitted, each document then reviews the request, prepares the documentation, and then redacts any information that would be responsive to that request. The state law also allows us to provide them with a pre-retrieval estimate if it's something that would take more than fifteen minutes of staff time to produce. So let's say, for example, they asked for all of my emails from like a six-month period with the word "city council." There would be a lot of hits if I were to do a search for that. So that type of request would take me more than fifteen minutes to compile and review because the state law does allow us to redact anything that might be privileged. And just the nature of doing city council work, there could be information in there that's privileged, whether it was protected personal information about a city council member or say it was something that had the executive session privilege, so that would be something that we would look at as well. The state law code section here, it allows us to redact all types of things. There's over fifty exceptions. The most common that we see and use in the city are personal cellphone numbers and personal email addresses, medical records. A request that we receive common will be from agencies, other cities, asking for employment files of city employees. So anytime that happens, we make sure that we go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Another big one is attorney-client privilege or attorney-work product, and then things as it specifically applies to the community development, such as trade secrets, real estate appraisals, economic development projects. Those are just a couple of examples. So anytime we suspect that there could be information that is, or could be withheld, or if it's involving a pending litigation matter or something that's super personal in nature, we really take redactions very seriously, and if it's something that we even want to elevate to the city attorney's office, they will review it as well before we provide it to the requester. In addition, so today, our IT team should have issued you, if not before today, your email account and the Duo authentication, which is the two-step authentication process that ensures that you are the person that's trying to access your city email account. The main purpose for that is open records, ensuring that we're able to retrieve emails if ever needed, and then also for cybersecurity. So moving forward, city staff will be emailing you reminders to your city email address. So information about upcoming packets, upcoming meetings, things of that nature, it will go to that city email account, and then we ask that you communicate about city business on your city email account. If you ever have an issue with your email, we do have a help desk portal that's pretty much open from seven-thirty to six PM, Monday through Friday, and I'll email your personal emails that link, so if you ever need it, or you can reach out to me or Ellie or anyone, we can help you. And then occasionally, you'll see a little training video about cybersecurity and how, just to be on the lookout for people fishing for information. So just as a best practice, we ask that you try to use your city email and really make it a priority to use your city email for city business, personal email for personal business. I know sometimes folks in your work, or if you represent your HOA, or you have questions about something personal, I would recommend emailing from your personal account for personal business. So say, for example, I was on a city board and I wanted to email Michael about getting the final plat for my home in Alpharetta. Instead of emailing him from my city email, I would do that from my personal account, just in case. That way, it would be solely personal, personal in nature, because if you did use your city email account and it was for personal business, that might be releasable under the Open Records Act. If there is stuff that is personal in nature that you have sent on your city email, if there is an applicable redaction, we will enforce it if possible. But just know that if you email something to Michael from your city email that says, "Michael, I loved your outfit last week," or something, that it could be, it could be released because that would not be something that could be redacted in the open records email. So that's just a funny example. But do you all have any questions? You're all open record professionals. Okay, if you have any issues accessing your email or, and then email that I'll send you, I'll also send you the desktop link, so if you don't want to access it from your cellphone, because I know your packets are rather large sometimes, I'll send you the desktop link where you can hop on a laptop or an iPad and access your city email there, too.
I was going to mention that although you do have these emails in the city's email server, I don't think the law allows us to delete emails from a government-issued email account.
So this is-
Because I'm going to delete everything on it.
Yes. So what's interesting is our IT team, because I've asked this to our IT director recently, is if I'm trying to clean out my inbox and I start deleting emails, it only deletes it out of my inbox. It doesn't delete it off the city server. So there are protections on the IT backend that protects us legally from both a legal discovery perspective and an open records perspective, because sometimes emails based on the Georgia retention statutes, some emails may be required that they're retained forever. So, for example, say I emailed Michael a question about a zoning application. According to the Georgia statute on records retention, any emails that's related to a zoning project, that would have permanent retention. So what's great about Michael's department, because I've worked there, and he made me do this since day one, was you had to keep all emails as it related to the file. So those are, you know, it is protected that way, but our IT team also has a second layer of protection that keeps it in a server for an X amount of period of time. So we have a way when we do email searches, either for open records or litigation purposes, that we can search in the server for pretty far back to retrieve those types of emails. So if you clean out your inbox and you start deleting things, we have a copy of it on the server.
Yeah, and I was advised previously that even that is not a good idea to delete them off your email account, although there's, there's two backup and on top of backups.
Yes, exactly. It's always good to have a backup to the backup.
I like to emphasize that, you know, just remember not to do personal business in the email. So if you want to email each other on personal matters, we use our own personal email accounts. It's easy to just type something, but once you send it, it's saved.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right.
Thank you guys so much for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, of course.
All right, we're going to go to the first item on the agenda. Michael will be presenting on CU-24-01, Terranova Skin Clinic, dash five-seven-five-five, North Point Parkway.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The first item before you this evening is a request for a conditional use to operate a spa services business in a one thousand one hundred and fifteen square foot suite in the North Point Park Office Park. The business provides skincare services. The property is located at fifty-seven fifty-five North Point Parkway, Suite Six, uh, Suite sixty-two, near the northwest corner of North Point Parkway and Rock Mill Road, and I do have the location map up on the overhead. North Point Park Office Park is an office condominium park, so the buildings within the park are actually individually owned. And so this is a street view of the park entrance from North Point Parkway. And this is an aerial of the office park. And this is the applicant's suite that they're looking to go into. That suite is located, I believe it is in this building here. So the development has forty-seven buildings, office buildings within it. They're one and two stories. There's a variety of businesses that are operating within the office park, including medical and professional offices, medical spas, commercial schools, insurance agencies, law offices, financial services, beauty shops, and other personal services. Property is owned O&amp;I Office Institutional, which does allow spa services with approval of a conditional use. The applicant's suite, Suite sixty-two, was previously approved for a conditional use for spa services. That business was Mango Bliss, and that business received conditional use approval back in two thousand and three. That business has gone, left that location, and they're no longer located within that office park. The conditional use approvals are always conditioned to the specific business, so even though a spa services conditional use was approved at that location, it was for a different business. So that is why this applicant is coming forward with a conditional use. The applicant's business is Terranova Skin Clinic. It's a new business. The primary focus of the business is skincare services for clients facing health challenges, including skin color remediation from scars, stretch marks, and anti-aging skin treatments. The property owner has approximately ten years of experience as a licensed esthetician. Won't go into all the details of her business. She is here this evening and will provide a presentation after I'm complete, or after I've completed my presentation. The hours of operation for the business are Monday through Saturday, ten AM to five PM, and the applicant anticipates up to four employees at this business. Of course, we looked at the conditional use review criteria. We found that the office park was developed in compliance with site access, and they also address, sufficiently address, off-street parking, loading and service areas, refuge areas, as well as buffers and screening for the property. We do believe that the applicant's proposed business will be compatible with the surrounding businesses within the office park. And then we also looked at the applicant's business as it relates to separated, being separated from similar uses and conflicting uses. And what we found in our research was that the the nearest spa services in this area is Eye Nails, Alpharetta Salon and Spa. That's located at seventy-three hundred North Point Parkway. It's approximately seventy-four hundred feet away. So the definition of spa services requires that the business not be within two thousand feet of another similar business. And so we did look, and we did not find any additional businesses. Initially, when the applicant submitted their request to us, we believed that there were other spa service businesses within the two thousand feet. And so the applicant requested a conditional use as well as a variance to reduce the distance. Upon our research, we found that the two other spa services that we believed to be in the area had gone out of business. So she does comply with the definition of spa services and didn't need that variance, so that was dropped. This item was shown to the public at the Community Zoning Information Meeting on December thirteenth, and there were no public comments at that meeting. And staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to five conditions, and I'll go through those conditions. Condition one, spa services shall be added as conditional use at fifty-seven fifty-five North Point Parkway, Suite sixty-two, and limited to no more than one thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet. That's the size of the suite. Condition two, conditional use approval shall be limited to Terranova Skin Clinic. No additional spa services use or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Condition three, spa services shall be limited to skincare services and treatments, including mastectomy reconstruction and three D, three D tattooing, scar and stretch mark camouflage, and anti-aging skin treatments. Condition four are the hours of operation. And condition five, window signage shall be limited to no more than ten percent of the window area, and window area shall not be covered or blacked out. No lighted window trim. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Are there state licenses required for professionals who engage in spas, like masseuse?
I didn't catch the very first part of that question.
Are there any state licenses required for individuals engaged in this type of business?
So state does issue a cosmetology-type license for, for an esthetician. So I believe that there would be requirements. We also have at the local level, we do require, we have a spa or massage license. So the applicant, if she is approved, will be required to get that license through our community development department.
So that doesn't have to be a condition of approval in this application? We don't have to have a condition requiring that you have a state license?
No, we do not.
It's already, okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other- Any other questions for Michael?
I had a couple. Michael, on condition three, just seeking clarity on the wording, it says, "The services shall be limited to skincare services and treatments," and I'm assuming this is including but not limited to mastectomy reconstruction, et cetera. As new techniques become available, I was just wanting to make sure that the wording was not so restricted that they'd have to come back for another procedure to add a new service.
So the reason why we added the "and" anti-aging skin treatments, that's the, that is the part of that sentence that kind of gives a little bit of flexibility for some services to be added, but the intent of that condition is really to kind of limit to the services that they're providing with their application. So if the applicant, if the applicant, let's just say they wanted to do waxing down, down the road, based on condition number three, they would not be able to do that. They would have to come back to, if they are, if the applicant is approved, they would have to go back to city council to change that condition to add waxing as a service.
And the applicant is okay with that?
As far as I understand, that is correct.
Okay, next question. Do we assume that there is a requirement for disposal of medical waste and make sure that this location can accommodate any medical waste removal requirements?
I'm not aware of any requirements with medical waste removal on this particular item. I don't think that that involves, that is involved with the applicant's business, but you may want to ask the applicant about that.
Okay, I will hold on that thought then. Thank you.
Michael, first off, there's quite a few medical practices around where the applicant's applying, so I would assume your question's gonna be taken care of. Is there a, and did I, it's been a while since I've done it on this side. Is there an application for an alcohol license on this zoning request? Will they be?
No. As far, I have not received anything with a request with, with an alcohol license.
Any other questions? All right, no further questions.
Thank you.
At this time, Michael, we're gonna ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Esther Reel. My, the location is 5755 North Point Parkway, Suite 62, zip code 30022. Well, I am an esthetician for about eleven years now, and I've been working with all kinds of skincare treatments, and I was okay with that. To 2022, I have a condition diagnostic with breast cancer. That's why I decided to redo my thoughts and the way I do things. And I realized because all the, all the people that I met have the same complaints about aesthetics, how they feel, self-esteem, and things like that. So, and then I, I knew this, this treatment before, but I never cared about. But when I myself had this condition, I mean, aesthetics, I decided to go ahead and do it. I went to Brazil, I went to one of the best ones to understand how this thing works. And that's why I decided to open my business and understand and to help other women to go, that being, go to treatment or mastectomy, because when you go to mastectomy, most of the time, they have to remove the whole breast tissue. So it's plain and, and all. I know maybe you guys don't understand the areola is the whole thing, that's the reconstruction, they call medical reconstructions. So, so aesthetics, when people, women, okay, I can do men's too, but most of the time it's more men's, excuse me, women's. And so I decided to help those women to feel better about themselves, is to cover the scars and reconstruct the areola, and to help them feel better about themselves, because it's not a kind of things that, you know, it's not, when women go through all those things, it's hard to understand and to, well, in my, I'm sorry, it's kind of hard for me to sometimes talk about this, but I want you guys to understand why I changed from skincare to all this, we call medical hair constructions and scars, cover camouflage, because the camouflage is more to cover, it's not, nothing related to medical condition, anything like that. And that's why I decided to open, and as I understand, most people is really, I met a lot of women who have the same problem, so, and then they feel uncomfortable with, when they see themselves on the mural and how, so that's why I decided to, to do that. And so, and I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you for the background. And so this is the, your first, this type of business?
Yeah.
This is your opening, very first one.
Yeah, I don't know a lot of people, I don't think I know anybody who does that. Of course, and around the United States, I, I met and I know a lot of people who does that. As far as I understand, here, I don't know anyone who does that. So, and that's why I decide, of course, I saw an opportunity to grow my business and to help people that need to be helped.
Thank you. Anyone has a question for the applicant? I know you had one or two.
Basically, just one, and it had to do with the list of the services that are shown as, as being what you'll provide. It's, I don't see it as being flexible for future additions. I was just curious about whether you expected to possibly add new techniques going forward, and whether you were more interested in some wording that gave you that flexibility for the future.
When you talk about flexibility, what do you, do you mean? Because I do skincare, you know, and inside the skincare, there is a lot of possibilities that we can do a lot of service inside that.
Right. I'm just thinking of the things that we don't know yet, like who would have thought ten years ago that cryotherapy was gonna be such a thing? You know what I mean? So as, as new things come along, I didn't know if you would be exploring new options and would want the flexibility to be able to expand your practice to include those, or if you're gonna focus on the areas that you were definitely concerned with right now.
Well, I understand by my experience, I don't wanna think about ten years from now.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna do something that I can do right now, something that I can do, because I don't know if I'll be alive next, you know, in the next year or so. So, and so I prefer to think that I can do something right now, and if in the future, if I think to change something, it would be a possibility, who knows? We all change minds at some point of life, but for now, that's, that's my goal.
Okay.
To work with ladies and women's and who need help.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have one question. First of all, thank you for wanting to do your business in Alpharetta. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just had a question on condition four, the hours of operation, so usually that was part of your application, you said 10 to 5. Do you feel that that's gonna accommodate you, and you don't, you know, I just wanna make sure that it's part of the condition, so that's, just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I, I think it's a good hour, but I can stand to six. I may stand to six, can be that, because, you know, I don't work from 10 to, to 5. I, I, you know, I don't, I, now I cannot do like three, four clients in one day. Physically, I cannot do it anymore.
Okay.
Okay? So I can do one at 10 and another one at 1, and that's why I'm, I'm-
So you're good with the way it's written? Monday, hours of operation should be Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m.?
To, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Can we stand that to six?
Yes, we would wanna do it now. Much easier to do it in the condition writing, so.
And we can clarify with Michael.
We'll clarify with Michael.
Whether there is any reason why.
Okay.
Okay. That's why I asked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There are no questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. I don't see any member of the public. If you have nothing else, I'll just turn this over to the board for discussion and our motion, and if they have any questions, you can follow.
Yeah, just wanna ask, Michael, do you have any objection of changing condition four from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., just to have that flexibility?
No objection to that.
Fantastic.
Next, I have a question too. With respect to what Commissioner Manley was asking on condition number three, the last statement is anti-aging skin treatment. Can it be rewarded to skin treatments?
That would be fine.
Because that, it's got, anybody who's trying to get skin treatment is anti-aging, that very standard terminology, so I'm thinking that basically opens it up that-
Yeah, that would probably provide a little bit more flexibility.
It's a very minor point, but, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion and, or motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve CU-24-01, Terranova Skin Clinic slash 5755 North Point Parkway, subject to the conditions as read by Mr. Woodman. With the edits to, on condition number three, to, at the end of the sentence where it says, "And stretch mark camouflage," and, we want to remove the word "anti-aging" and just say "skin treatments." And then on condition four, we want to change the closing time from 5 p.m. to 6 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and properly circulated. End of further discussions. Hearing none or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, and this goes to city council on January the 29th. City council makes the final decision. The recommendation is approval. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is PH-24-01 Unified Development Code text amendments, golf course tree removal, and Ms. Cook is gonna be presenting.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. The next item before you is a consideration of a text amendment, a change to the Unified Development Code. Specifically, staff is recommending changes to UDC Section 3.2.3 exemptions, to exempt golf courses from the provisions of Section 3.2, tree conservation, landscape, and buffer requirements, but require a 60% minimum tree canopy on the, on the golf course. The text amendment would exempt golf courses from the tree removal permit requirements, which is usually if, if you take out a specimen tree, you have to replant three times the inches of the tree, but they would, this would still require that they have a minimum canopy of 60%. This would also apply to areas of the golf course, it would not apply to areas of the golf course developed with permanent structures, such as the parking lot, clubhouse, lodging, guest services, and it does not apply to trees and buffers or new land development. So this is for the existing course. It doesn't apply for that, the clubhouse, and the reason is if you look at the clubhouse, that's probably very similar to, in the parking lot, to something in a Best Buy. It's, it's very similar to a, a commercial development whereby if you come in to take out a tree and need a tree removal permit at a typical commercial property, it's usually because there's a safety issue, tree is dead, they need to replace it with a different species, but it usually goes back in the same spot. When you look at golf courses, it's the only thing that we've seen in the city that's different as a commercial entity, because a lot of the tree removal is because of the turf management. So you may have six trees together, they're all growing together, you have this big canopy, you remove one, well, it's difficult for a golf course than to come back and put three times that tree that they remove, the inches, because you're trying to treat and make sure that you don't have moisture problems. Of course, if you're playing golf, you don't want trees obstructing the course, so those are some of the things that we found that was, that was very different from a golf course, with a golf course than any other commercial property that we, we found in Alpharetta. So how do we come up with 60%? That's double what we require for a single-family residential lot. So a single-family residential lot has to have, maintain a 30% tree canopy. Golf course would be required 60%. Again, doesn't apply to anything outside that pervious green area. Some of the other things that they, that we found that are difficult, of course, it's the playing surfaces, the tee box, the fairway, the green, managing all of that, the turf grass, and the, the moisture tolerances. We are, we did, we did submit a change for your consideration that's in the section that shows the exemption, but I had a call from one of the commissioners that asked us to be more detailed with this exemption, so I'm gonna pass one out, and I think I left it over there on a clip, Michael, if you'll pass it out, and I'll put that up here. So what I had was the removal of trees from golf courses that maintain a tree canopy coverage of at least 60%. This exemption shall not apply to development of land or areas previously improved at clubhouse, lodging, guest services, parking lots, or other similar areas, or removal of trees in the stream buffer. So I added a sentence and some criteria for that, so it's very specific. And again, this, this does not apply if they're expanding the golf course, if they're adding additional holes to the golf course, it's not for any kind of new land development, this is purely with the maintenance of tree removal. So to make sure that we were very clear on the requirements and that there could be a master permit on file, if anybody wanted to take a look at that, we added the last two sentences. A, a master, a master tree removal plan shall be required for arborist approval. The plan may be updated, and removals shall include circumstances for removal that include one of the following: turf grass management for existing course, course playability, obstruction, or safety. Just to make clear that it is for those three issues. And I will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, that was a significant improvement. The one thing I'll, I just mention a minor thing, you have, when you list out the types of improvements, clubhouse, lodging, guest services, parking lots, or other similar areas, I would change areas to, instead of areas, you're talking specifically about these types of improvements or structures. Area is, doesn't capture, in my opinion, what you're trying to say. Areas previously improved. Should the word "previously" be there, or is it areas?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So it's just areas improved as clubhouse, lodging, guest services, parking lots, or other similar areas?
Yeah, I think that's, that's probably-
Yeah, and we, we put "previously" just to make sure it wasn't, well, this is a new permit.
Before now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I did have a couple of questions. On the permanent structures, just in my mind, because it is very specific to golf courses, that includes the little shacks that they have on the holes, some of the holes.
On the holes, yeah.
So even those areas too.
Yeah.
So it extends the way. And then, how do we checks and balances?
And that's why we added the last two, the last sentence.
So is it an annual tree removal plan review of every five years?
Right now it is. It's, it's really what we do now, it's just we can't find locations for them to replant. So we have a book in our, in our office that the arborist keeps, it's updated as they remove trees and the reason that they're removing those, but we keep that. remove trees and the reason that they're removing those, but we keep that, we keep a master plan. And so if they have any changes, they would have to come and submit that to the arborist, so we would have one full book if there was any, anybody from the public that wanted to come and take a look at what the removals were going to be, so we would have that available.
And then, may I ask another question?
You can ask 10 questions.
Yes, I have a few. The 60%, how, so that's a standard practice that the arborist currently uses in reviews?
Yes.
And that's.
And he reviewed this one and said they're currently at 62%.
Okay. And so that's a very easily calculated thing and reviewed, okay.
Yes.
And then, the one concern I have is the street trees on Golf Course Drive, because those are big and very beautiful. That wouldn't be impacted at all, like all those easements that are there for all the maintenance and stuff like that?
No.
So that's all okay?
No, this is, this is the course itself, which is mostly, I mean pervious.
Okay. Okay. I think the addition of those last two sentences was a huge improvement. I would love it, and I hate to get so specific for one property in our city, you know, I mean, I think that really, there's only one golf course.
Right.
But a master tree removal plan shall be required for the arborist's approval. Annual review or something so that it, you know, we're doing some due diligence here, making sure it's not free game on everything that's being taken out.
Well, they'll, they'll have a master plan, and then they, it does say that it may be updated, but it has to, removals have to include one of those three reasons. So it's something we may consistently, we constantly, since it is something they maintain all the time, very different from commercial property, it's something we constantly have and it's always updated.
Okay. What I don't want to do is find out after the fact, like this whole, all these trees were taken out and it wasn't, you know, we weren't.
And we currently have on file a book that shows everything they plan to take out.
Oh, you do already?
Yes. The arborist already has a book.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, we've, he's been doing that with them for years because it is such a different property than others. I mean, they can't come in, there's too many permits, it's a constant maintenance.
We don't want to try to solve a problem that doesn't exist.
No, you're right. I just, when I first read this, I had heartache.
Yeah, so I think it was, that's why I put the details in there of.
Yeah. And it helps to know that that process is literally already in place.
It is.
You know, I just, you know, I get concerned with the buffers for the homes that do back up to it, and, you know, would want some thought if those are already on the to-be-strike list, would want those homeowners to have, you know.
Yeah. And this is, this is probably an issue we've had trying to figure out the best approach for probably close to two years. But we've, you know, they're, they're very good about giving us the master removal book and then coming in with changes to that as needed and staying in constant contact with us.
I have a quick question. In the updated version here, I noticed that rather than say "stream buffers," you simply say "buffers," which I'm happier with. That was deliberate, right?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Cook, I think you've done well on this and, and the concerns expressed here, I can tell you that we have 3,000 homes that will tell us about anything they, they see before we even notice it. So I am not worried about keeping 60% because those people are our eyes and they've always have been in this city, so.
Very true.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we have one person, the previous applicant, so I'll ask whether you'd like to make any comment about this item.
Would you like to say anything?
You don't have to.
I'm sorry, I didn't really.
I was just, yes. We usually have public comment, and since we have one member of the public now that your item is considered, I give you an opportunity to speak. All right. I was going to ask you one quick question. The 60% number you mentioned, I think I saw that the golf course is 62% now?
That's correct.
Okay, just, I was just clarifying that. All right, if there are no further questions and no discussions, I'm going to ask for This, he can make his first motion.
I move, trying to find where I'm going. Move to approve PH-24-01 Unified Code text amendment as stated in our report.
Actually, I think you want to actually say just DC clarification as provided tonight because our.
With the amendment.
The amendment that Kathy.
Amendment number seven that Ms. Cook entered. Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and properly circulated. Any further discussions? Hearing none or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. I fail to recognize our new planning commissioner, Mr. DC Aiken. Seems like we, council members and planning commissioners are trading places. We're happy to have you.
He just likes being part of the city.
Yeah, I know. He is a great public servant, so we appreciate you being a member of the planning commission. Are there any other items the board would like to discuss? Michael, Kathy have anything? Ella?
I'll be back.
We will come back. Meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year again.